18th 2022 meeting is called to order and tonight we're going to be moving off of the agenda to student celebrations due to the fact that some of these students have other events to attend. Dr. Stevens, student celebrations.
Yes, we are going to begin this evening celebrating many groups of students, but first, we're going to start with our top 10% student group and we're going to start with the class of 2022 valedictorian DJ Dillahay. If you would please come forward onto the stage in the spotlight. Come on down. And a board member will be joining you with a nice little memento for you. It might be a board member that you know quite well. DJ will be attending Brown University where he will pursue a pre-med degree and play for the Bears baseball program. Since his freshman year, his vision and goal were to become the valedictorian of the class of 2022. During the summer of his senior year, he transferred all of his focus toward academics and decided to invest time and energy into college courses exclusively. His determination to pursue excellence in his academic studies propelled DJ to his achievement of valedictorian. However, DJ is more than just a stellar student athlete. He has long served as a model of servant leadership and is viewed as such by many and by his peers as well. Undoubtedly, DJ has a bright future ahead of himself and will represent THS and the community of Telahoma very well in his future endeavors. We congratulate you, DJ Dillahay, valedictorian. And DJ, if you'll stay up here one moment, Mr. Birdsong would like to get a photo. Would you like them in the center? All right, so when the students, when you come up, if you'll come up to the center. All right. Very good. Thank you again, DJ. So proud of you. And now we would like to welcome and introduce Biff Tu Rega. I did not see Biff Tu earlier, but I hope she has snuck in. Is she here? All right. You know what I'm going to do? I'm going to hope that she is going to enter here in just a moment, so I am going to move to the rest of the group in the top 10%. So if you are the remaining students in this illustrious group, the top 10%, if you would please make your way down to the stage and you will come across the front of the stage because Mr. Birdsong will be taking photographs. So here comes the top 10% of the class of 2022 to the stage. This exceptional group of students set the bar high for this graduating class. It is a pleasure to celebrate this group of young men and women who have given their all academically and are now celebrating an outstanding accomplishment as being in the top 10% of their graduating class. These exceptional students will also be celebrated on May 3rd here at THS during the top 10% banquet. They are Franklin Zhang, Anna Brooks, Elizabeth Arnett Bailey Byram, Cameron Alexander Catherine Ellis, Andrew Brown, Amy Pham, Jacob Bennett, Cannon Emery, Clifton Baker, Jackson Clements, Nikolai Zemecky, Garnett Cuello, Cassidy Northcutt, Kelsey Evans, Paris Watson, William Reed, Megan Smith, Lauren Rogers, George Quick, Annabelle Shambley, Kaylee and Kaylee Smith. Let's give this top 10% crowd a rounding rows of applause. We are so proud of you. And let me just say while they're standing here before you, their freshman year was the last year they had what we would say a typical normal year. Their sophomore year, they would have been in school and then school would have ended about March and they would have gone into their homes due to a pandemic. They came back their junior year in very challenging times as we all across the country reopen schools during a worldwide pandemic and they navigated that graciously, gracefully, and with incredible grit and perseverance. And here they are as seniors just about to graduate and fly off into their next adventure and they have navigated yet another very interesting year. And as you can see before you, they did an exceptional job. One more time for this top 10%. And Mr. Birdsong, everybody's looking at him, we're smiling beautifully, so proud. All right, thank you all so much. And let me check on Biff Tu. Biff Tu, have you arrived?
Here comes somebody. Okay. Yes, she just came in.
All right, Biff Tu. Come on down. Now, some of you will recognize Biff Tu. Biff Tu has been celebrated here with this board previously. You're going to come right on up to the center. Biff Tu Rega has proven to be an outstanding student in academics, character, work ethic, and community interest. She has always pushed herself and excelled academically in all her coursework as well as other responsibilities and extracurricular activities. In addition, she has been a vital member of many clubs and organizations such as Future Business Leaders of America, in which she presides as president. She is the vice president of the National Honor Society. She is in the National English Honor Society, Mu Alpha Theta, and I have been honored to know her better as she has served on my high school student advisory team. I have no doubt she will be immensely successful as she enters college this fall. Let's congratulate this year's salutatorian of the class of 2022, Ms. Biff Tu Rega.
Do you want to continue with student celebrations?
Yes, yes.
This is a very exciting time and we are going to continue with the celebration. Next, we're going to celebrate the arts in Telahoma. We've had several students represent Telahoma in a most incredible way. Let's welcome to the stage Bel Air Elementary 5th graders who were named in the Tennessee Treble Honor Choir. The Tennessee Treble Honor Choir is an auditioned chorus composed of 5th and 6th grade students from across the state of Tennessee. In late April, members will rehearse and will perform at the Opryland Hotel and Resort in Nashville. After a full day of rehearsals, on Friday, April 29th, the event will conclude with a concert beginning at 8:45 a.m. on Saturday, April 30th. Let's celebrate these singing, not only buzzing, but singing Bel Air Bs. Timothy Hanson, Jack Harris, Isaac McVeigh, and Peyton Skeeters. Excellent job. Continuing on because there's just more to celebrate. High school students auditioned for mid-state choir in the fall semester by singing two classical pieces. Both pieces were in Latin this year. Each audition was judged in a blind audition by a panel of five judges based on rhythm, pitch, tone, expression, and musicality. In Middle Tennessee, over 1,200 students auditioned for the mid-state honor choir this year. Students achieve all-state status if their mid-state placement is in the top 12 chairs of the mid-state choir. All-state students must pass a second audition called second-tier screening in January. Students sing their music in octets for a panel of eight judges. This audition is to ensure that the students know 80% of their all-state music. These auditions are incredibly challenging. I'm proud to have with us tonight the fourth chair of the all-state choir, Ms. Anne Duncan. Come on down. Most impressive. And she has a cheering section. I couldn't really hear them. Let's try that again. Anne Duncan. Congratulations, Anne. Being a Tennessee all-state musician is the highest honor a student musician can receive in our state. The two-tier process begins in the fall where students prepare an audition at the mid-state level consisting of a prepared excerpt, scales, and sight reading. Scores from these three categories determine if a student first makes the mid-state ensembles and then ultimately their overall ranking against hundreds of other student musicians. Students who are selected in the top few chairs of the Middle Tennessee Gold Band then qualify for the Tennessee All-State Ensembles. These ensembles consist of concert band, symphony orchestra, and a jazz band. This year, the Telahoma Band is honored to have seven students qualify for this achievement. Over the last few weeks, these students have been preparing their final audition recordings to determine their ranking in the Tennessee All-State Ensemble. Five students will be participating in the concert band and two in the symphony orchestra. These students will travel to Gaylord Opryland Resort and spend an intensive three days in rehearsals with world-renowned conductors to prepare a concert on Saturday, April 30th. The 2022 Telahoma Band all-state members are Ethan Eldridge, 910 Band Euphonium, Isabella English, 910 Band Flute. Y'all come on down when you hear your name called, Ethan and Isabella. Xavier Fowler, 910 Band Trumpet. Braden Robertson, 910 Band Bass Clarinet. Chloe Fuller, 1112 Band Alto Saxophone. Rex Asgren, 1112 Orchestra Clarinet. Isaac Swinney, 1112 Orchestra Trumpet. Let us give these seven students an amazing round of applause. Excellent. If you'll all look at Mr. There we go. All right, very good. Thank you so much. We are proud of you. And finally, in our celebration of the arts is all-state musical theater member Juliet Orhuela. Juliet auditioned virtually by performing a monologue and a section of a musical theater song. Her performance was outstanding as she ranked as one of the top 25 performers in the entire state of Tennessee. In February, Juliet performed at the All-State Conference at Rockville High School. Juliet, come on down. All right, she may not be able to be with us. All right. Last, but certainly not least, in our array of student celebrations tonight, I'm thrilled to celebrate this next young lady, Ms. Lindsay Jackson. She started bowling, by the way, at the young age of eight. Come on down. And I want you to know, she told me that I had potential as a bowler when I went and watched them bowl. That just made me feel so good, coming from an expert. She has dedicated the years since to perfecting her craft while not only playing for the high school bowling team, but also serving as a board member of the association. Lindsay was recently named as a 2022 United States Bowling Congress Youth Ambassador. By the way, there's only two of them. This is a huge honor as only two people in the entire country receive this honor each year. Lindsay will receive a $1,500 scholarship and will be attending the USBC convention next week in Las Vegas. Did you need a chaperone? I'm just checking. All right, help me in congratulating this exceptional young lady. All right, board chair, that is our student celebrations.
Thank you, thank you, and thank you, students. If you were here for the student celebrations, students and parents, you are welcome to exit now before we start the meeting. You, of course, are always welcome to stay, but also feel comfortable leaving. We're going to give you just a minute and then we're going to go back to the beginning There are ballgames and practices and all kinds of things going on right now. Thank you all so much. Our pledge will be led tonight by Board Member Amy Dodson.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Amy. Roll call, Mrs. Thank you so much. Approval of the agenda, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Motion, Sid Hill.
Motion by Sid Hill, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Teresa Lawson, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
That's all in favor of you.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're done with the student celebrations, but now we get to celebrate the teachers.
Yes, it is always an exciting time of year to recognize our teachers of the year. At first, I'm going to ask the six building-level winners, we're going to hold the three district winners for the next portion, so the six building winners, if you will come forward and the principals will also make their way toward the microphone because they're going to have wonderful things to share about these amazing educators. From Bel Air Elementary Beth Ray, East Lincoln Elementary Amanda Haislett, Jack T. Farah Elementary Corinne Moyers, East Middle School Travis Thompson, and Telahoma High School Missy Aiken and Angela Pendigraft Patterson. If the six of you would come to the center of the stage, much like you saw the students do, you all look lovely, and our principals will come to the microphone that's to my left, your right, and we're going to start with Bel Air Elementary. And what I will ask teachers as you are up here standing, when your principal is reading about you, if you will just take one step forward so those watching will know who is being acknowledged and honored. All right, so Dr. Epley, if you will please share with us about your teacher of the year.
Absolutely. I have the privilege of honoring, welcoming, and speaking to Ms. Beth Ray. She teaches 3rd grade at Bel Air. This is my third year at Bel Air and I've become very fond of the school and one of the reasons is because of the wonderful teachers there. Ms. Ray certainly is that. We're lucky to have Ms. Ray. She graduated from Moore County High School, went on to MTSU where she received a degree in business administration, and then thankfully, she went back to school through the 2+2 program with a degree in elementary ed. She was an EA at Bel Air, an assistant for a year, and now has taught at Bel Air for eight years. So she's been at Bel Air for a little while and she's a foundational piece to our team. I had a script, but I always, for better or worse, don't go by the script I write, so I'm going to put it away. Ms. Ray's very calm. When you go in her room, and I have the privilege of going in many rooms, very calm presence. She has a great relationship with her students and her students feed off of her calm presence. Ms. Ray understands and enjoys each parts of the curriculum. She loves science. She's a wonderful reading teacher, enjoys math and social studies, and it shows when you're in her room because as she's going through her curriculum and key words or vocabulary terms, she connects them cross-curricularly and brings context and relevance to what her students are learning. She's a leader within our school. This year, she's had a student teacher and she's done a phenomenal job with our student teacher. I'm very thankful to have Ms. Ray at Bel Air and I know the rest of the Bel Air Bs are as well, so congratulations, Ms. Beth Ray.
All right. And I just want it noted, do you notice how far back the stage they go? They really do not, I almost feel like they might just sit right here for a second. I don't know, they're just really close. They keep coming closer. I love it though. Okay, next, we've got Mr. Hargrove, who's going to talk with us about his teacher of the year, Amanda Haislett, who will now step forward into the light.
I've looked forward to this for a while. Back in the 90s, there was a young freshman along with her friend Heater that sat and just drove me absolutely crazy as I was her world geography teacher. And I've been her principal for nine years now and I probably have driven her just as crazy. But Amanda Haislett has been with our school system for 18 years, most of that in kindergarten. We needed a second-grade teacher and Amanda stepped up and volunteered. You know, that kind of speaks volumes. She's always trying to find ways to get better at her craft. She's an awesome mama. She's a pretty good daughter, both the girls are. She's a great employee and she's a great friend, but to see the impact that she has on the students in the classroom is amazing. You walk in her classroom and her peers shared a phrase and two words, she's genuine, she's caring, and she's kind-hearted. And you see that every day displayed in her classroom and she's a teacher leader. She may not admit that, but she is. But we're lucky to have her and we're very proud of Amanda Haislett and we appreciate what you do for our school every day. You're welcome.
All right.
I need to add that I was Amanda's 5th grade teacher also, so I feel like I probably contributed to this award.
Are we getting to the reason she got the award?
I'm sharing this award with you. Congratulations.
Sharing the award with her, I love it, I love it. All right, next, we are going to welcome Mr. Travis Moore to the microphone as he recognizes and celebrates his teacher of the year, Corinne Moyers.
All right, welcome. Glad everybody's here tonight, Corinne. She has been with us for a few years now. Started out as a EA, a speech EA, doing a lot of digital-type things. Ms. Wendy was, she was with Ms. Wendy, or Dr. Wilkerson in that role. She started out her career in Rutherford County, teaching, self-contained, I believe, 5th grade self-contained there in Rutherford County, came back here in 2008. And one other thing is, is Ms. Ray and Ms. Corinne, they graduated together at Moore County, so that's kind of a common thing here. They met each other in kindergarten, so they've known each other for a while. I saw the parents reminiscing back there in the lobby earlier, so you know, it must flow in that grade level there. Came to us and, like I said, was part of the speech program and then moved into a 4th grade spot in Science and Social Studies and then is currently teaching 3rd grade Science and Social Studies. Been with us the last two years, has a wonderful team that she works with. A lot of times, Science and Social Studies is the forgotten subject. She does not let that happen. You should see her scores from last year, they were great going into there. So I think it's an honor just for your peers, because I don't know, most people know, the peers are the ones that vote on this for the teacher of the year. And so what an honor for your peers to vote you in as teacher of the year. And I think that speaks volumes for you and what you do at the Pond, so we appreciate you and everything you do at the Pond. Thank you.
All right, Corinne. And now Dr. Woody Dillahay will make his way forward from East Middle School and I will ask Travis Thompson to step forward. And a little special surprise or secret about Mr. Thompson, while the board chair may have been the 5th grade teacher to Amanda Haislett, I was one of Travis's professors at MTSU while he was earning his degree to be a teacher. So if anyone can join you in sharing this award, I think maybe, Dr. Dillahay?
All right. Well, Travis, congratulations. Travis, I think, has his wife Christie here in the back and is the father of Hayden and Alexa. Travis has been married for 19 years, has been in public education for 22 years, 18 of those right here in Telahoma. He graduated from Memphis, I don't know if you can see his tie, but there's probably a tiger and an M on there, and got his master's degree from MTSU. Mr. Thompson is a man of faith and conviction and he's just one of those guys you turn to and you know you're going to get a straightforward answer. He is certainly a leader in our building. Mr. Thompson, I think you demonstrate a balance of courage and encouragement and accountability both with our students and the adults in our building. Mr. Thompson enjoys theater, baseball, and is a member of First Baptist Church. So congratulations, teacher of the year at East Middle School, Travis Thompson.
All right. And next, Mr. Jason Quick will make his way. He's got a couple of teachers he is going to recognize and celebrate this evening. We will begin first with Missy Aiken.
So if you'll notice, what you're going to notice for these two right here, if they could run off the stage right now, they would. But that tells you a lot about both of them. I'm going to talk first about Missy. Missy has served our school with unbelievable passion and compassion for the students that she serves. She oversees our sped department here at the high school. Part of that is she is focused on making sure that every student knows that they're valued and loved at Telahoma High School. So when dealing with some of her students, she will deal with students that are frustrated, may have academic learning challenges, may have social challenges. One of the best things I can tell you about Missy is if you ever want to know what the heart of a teacher looks like, go by her room and you can kind of peek in the window and you can see her working one-on-one with students. She does a phenomenal job. She has served as the director of special education previously at Bedford County and she's brought a lot of experience, love, and compassion to us. But she also does it for her colleagues. She is viewed by many in our faculty as a mentor, as a trusted person to seek out for wisdom on how to relate with students, relate with content, how to make sure that we are meeting the needs of all of our students. So Missy, I want to say thank you for all you do for us and all you do for our students and you set the standard high for us and I just want to say thank you for all you do.
And now we would like to recognize from Telahoma High School Angela Pendigraft Patterson.
So Angela Pendigraft Patterson has set her personal record today for standing still. For those of you that know Angela, she does not stand still. When I think of Angela Pendigraft, she was voted teacher of the year not because of what she does only for her students, but what she does for all of our school. From a student perspective, she also reaches out to students and helps them find their way and let them know that they're appreciated and there's a spot for them at Telahoma High School. I remember coming to her last year and threw out a now huge phenomenon called esports and I asked, would you like to create a team of esports? Boom. The next thing I know, and what you do with Angela is you just say, go. And then you don't see her, but then she comes back and she has created an unbelievable atmosphere for her children, a place for her students again to feel accepted, loved, and they have now a social network. We also, when you walk by her room, you'll see her working with students on coding. She does a lot with our students in coding, working with AP students, working with honor students, and does an unbelievably tremendous job. But our school would not function the way that it does if Angela wasn't in her role as technology coordinator. I'm not sure what we call her, we just call her Angela, because that, when you say, hey, get Angela to help, that covers a lot of area for us. She oversees all of our Chromebooks, she's the one that kids come running to, I need a charger, I need this, I need that. But she does it with such, again, compassion, which we see from all of our faculty. I watch you reach out to students and I don't think you know the impact that you're having on them, but the impact you have on them is also matched with the impact you have on our school. And I can't say thank you enough for all that you do for us. And again, voted on by your peers, both Miss Aiken and Miss Pendigraft, that tells you the value that you bring to our community and to our culture here at Telahoma. Ms. Angela Pendigraft. Miss Angela Pendegraft.
So now is the fun time where we get them each to give us a speech. Just kidding. Let's give them another round of applause. Thank you all so much. Proud of you, proud of each one of you. And now I'm going to call our three District Teachers of the Year. These are also building-level winners who progressed forward and were named as district-level winners as well. We have Tabitha Tucker from Robert E. Lee Elementary School as our Elementary District Teacher of the Year, Kathy McMillan, art teacher at West Middle School as our middle-level Teacher of the Year, and Amy Sisk, who is teaching world history, social studies to our freshman students currently at the high school, and she is our High School District Teacher of the Year. These three individuals progress forward into the regional competition with the state Teacher of the Year process. So if I could have, Mr. Quick, you are close and on a roll. How about you share with us about Telahoma High School District Teacher of the Year, Amy Sisk?
All right. Everybody take a look at Amy for a minute. Oh, they said step forward, I'm sorry. If Amy looks uncomfortable onstage, it's because she is. And I was telling her earlier today, that's what makes her the educator that she is, because it's all about everyone else. It is never about herself. The over-under on this board meeting tonight was 94 minutes? It could easily be 194 minutes, because I could spend an hour and a half talking about Amy Sisk and what she means to the life of our school. I got to know Amy when I became the principal here last year, as Amy served in the role as Assistant Principal. And she taught me an awful lot. Amy will not take credit for all the good that she does, but she taught me an awful lot, not only about this high school, but she also taught me an awful lot about our kids, who I had been missing for 30 years. And she explained to me the quality of education, what culture looks like. She explained to me what service looks like. And I don't know if we have a better example at this high school of servant leadership than we do of Amy Sisk. Amy not only is an unbelievable educator, and I'm just going to tell you, I went to her classroom, and she had a video up about how to make hot dogs. Do you remember that? I sat there, and I was fascinated. I'm like, "Oh, my gosh." No, yeah, I agree. No, 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 no. It wasn't connected to curriculum. But what she does is this, and from a classroom perspective, she takes world history, and she makes her classroom alive and engaging for these students. These students have an understanding of the expectation from Miss Sisk. They have such a deep love for her that the content is secondary to making sure they don't do anything to let Miss Sisk down, because they know how much you love them. And I watch that every day, and I can't tell you how much that means to me, especially as we're talking about incoming freshmen who have all the scares and spooks of coming to a high school. But not only that, if you want to have a pep rally, just so you know, if you want to have a pep rally, you need to hire Amy Sisk. No one will rally her troops quicker and faster than Amy Sisk as far as the spirit for this school, the spirit for our students. And she has an unbelievable job of just bringing consensus amongst all of her colleagues. She's done an absolutely great job of that. She also is in charge of our Top 10% banquet. I had no idea. You know, when you're in a role, Dr. Stevens, sometimes you wonder, "How did this come together?" Amy does all these things where she doesn't ask for any credit, she doesn't ask for any acknowledgement. But when I think of Amy, I think of Swiss Army knife. If you need something, she can do it. She'll do it, and she has the equipment and the ability to get it done. For her to step out of an AP role and in one year make the kind of impact that has led her to become the District High School Teacher of the Year tells you volumes about Amy and her heart. Amy, I can't tell you how much I appreciate you and how much you mean to this school. You are one of the cornerstones of the future of this school, and I just want to say thanks. Amy Sisk.
And now we'll welcome Ms. Cindy Herrera forward to the microphone to celebrate and honor our Middle School District Teacher of the Year, Kathy McMillan.
Okay.
Step forward.
They resist. All right, so we're talking about Kathy McMillan. She, first of all, I just want to say, we've been friends for a lot of years, but I want to say something about Kathy that a lot of people probably know, especially our district office, that she puts her heart and soul in teaching. And so when you have the opportunity to be in our building, and you get to see Kathy first thing in the morning, she hugs about 400 kids every day as they come through the door. So she puts her heart and soul not only into her classroom, but also into the kids at West Middle School, and she's a gift. She's a gift to Telahoma. We're blessed that she's in Telahoma City Schools. We're blessed, I'm very blessed that she's at West Middle School, because she puts so much into the students at West Middle School. She makes them believe that they can do anything in art. And I'll just give a little quick, I was talking to Jill Kimsey today about Kathy, and I said, "The thing about Kathy, even if you could do no piece of art, if you walked into her classroom, and you sat there, and you listened to her instructions, you'd be so fired up." And her detail, her attention to detail as she's teaching, any student at West Middle School creates incredible pieces of art. So that's one of her gifts. But a bigger piece of her gift is her ability to build relationships at West. She makes all the kids. Every kid there, she knows every child's name, she knows what they're good at, and she brings out the best in every kid. So I think that she has many gifts, but her gift of teaching, her gift of building relationships, and her gift that she gives to our school every single day, she's always willing, anything that's on the creative process, she is on it. At West, I didn't know that other schools didn't do dances the way West does. When we have a dance, we decided not to tell a lot of people about it, but we decided to have a Valentine's dance this year. And it was an in-school dance to reward the kids for some of the things they had accomplished. But she goes, "We can't have a dance without decorations." She went on her own, went on a tangent, which we loved, and she made that gym beautiful. And the kids have these special experiences at West, because she's continually looking for ways to make their experience at West Middle School special, and also to make all the kids special. So I'm thankful for Kathy McMillan. We actually grew up together. We went to South Jackson Elementary, then on to Farrer, then on to West and the high school. So she's been making an impact in Telahoma for a very long time, but in case you don't know this, you ought to follow her on Facebook. And you will see not only the creations of her students, but some of the things that she works on. And she would never talk about it, but she is, there's communication with her continually around the entire, not Telahoma, not Coffee County, not just Tennessee, all over the world, people are contacting her about different art projects she does through West Middle School. So I'm thankful that I get to work with you every single day. I'm thankful for her hugs. She always brings the bright spot out every day, and so we are very happy that she is not only West Middle School's Teacher of the Year, but she is Telahoma City Schools' Middle School Teacher of the Year. So we thank her. Thank you, Kathy.
And now I would like for Ms. Mary Gilbert to come forward and share with us a celebration of Tabitha Tucker, our Elementary District Teacher of the Year.
Well, I'm excited to be here tonight. Tabitha, wow, it is such an honor and a privilege. And I want you to know that she is standing still. And we've had this thing about Tabitha. Tabitha comes to school lots of energy. And I don't know if anybody knows this about Tabitha, but her family will know this. She loves to shop, but she doesn't drop. So where all of us would shop and be tired, not Tabitha. She's like the Energizer Bunny. She just keeps on keeping on. And so it's with that special energy that she brings to Robert E. Lee, and wow, what a gift it is, Tabitha Tucker. This is her seventh-year teaching, but don't let that surprise you, to be as young as she is. She has so many miles beyond her as far as her teaching ability. It's amazing for me to see, and wow, I'm blessed by it every day. But Tabitha started out in Bedford County as a first-grade teacher, and we are fortunate enough to have her with Telahoma City Schools. She taught one year kindergarten and three years first grade, so making a total of seven years. Something that Tabitha has shared that I think is so, so special is that she wants to love students. She had the privilege of having a teacher in kindergarten that touched her life in a very unique and special way. And that teacher was loving and compassionate and taught her how to have fun. Have fun while you're learning. And that is what Tabitha is about, that learning is fun, and you need to have it as a lifelong skill. She continued to share with me that that was something every teacher that she had the privilege of having touched her life in a special way. And she said that they were compassionate, and they were loving, and they were caring, and they believed in her. And that's the kind of teacher that she wants to be today. She wants to have the same impact that those same teachers had on her, and her becoming a lifelong learner. When you go to her room, you see this energy, and she's up, and she's going, and these children feel loved. I feel loved when I'm in there. And they're engaged, not just with learning, but doing. And she's making learning fun. And wow, what a privilege it is to be an administrator. When I get to go in her room and see that, and something else that she shares is how special it is for that light bulb to go off. And it's first graders, when it starts coming together, and they're learning how to read, and they're making that connection with reading and writing. And then she said, "Take math." And they're starting to learn how to problem-solve and how to do equations. And as she's telling this, she gets excited. Something last year that just stands out to show you her character. Tabitha came to school on her own time this summer and set up your whole classroom. She had it ready because she wanted her classroom ready. And we know what happened with COVID, and we know what happened with a lot of our guidelines and with, you know, the distancing. Well, Tabitha didn't quite have that room set up like that. And she found out, all of a sudden, she's going to have to go back and move everything that she did to make it work for our students. And she did it. And not only did she do it, she did it with this same energy, heart, and love for her students. And that's something, as an administrator, you're just stepping back and going, "Wow." And not only did she do that, we talked about, number one, we're going to love our students. First thing we're going to do is build a relationship and love our students. The second thing is, we're going to provide that safe space, which she did. And the third is, the academics will come. We will have those gaps closing, and they will make significant gains, and she did this. All of this happened in her classroom, and it started with loving her students. I want to share something that Tabitha wrote that I thought was very special, and it's telling you about why she wants to be a teacher. She said, "Teaching is my passion, and I am truly blessed that I get to spend most of my day teaching and loving the children that I interact with each day. My goal is to love them and to have an impact on one child each year, as my teachers did for me." I just want to say that it is an honor and privilege that I'm here tonight celebrating Tabitha Tucker, not only as our Robert E. Lee Teacher of the Year, but also as the District Elementary Teacher of the Year. Tabitha, thank you for everything you do for our students. We love you. Thank you.
And now, we are very thankful to have Mr. Jim Woodard here this evening from the Telahoma Education Foundation for Excellence. And he has an announcement and a celebration and gift that he will be providing to these district winners.
Dr. Stevens, thank you. I do have a wingman with me today who is the past-
Yay, Mr. Jim Henry.
Mr. Jim Henry, he's our past chairman, past chair for the Teloma Educational Foundation. And for the school board, for the faculty, and for the members that are here, I get to be this year's chairman of the Educational Foundation, but I have good footprints to walk into. But we want to brag, as the chairman of the Teloma Educational Foundation, we have a 21-member board. We've been around for quite a few years, and as it says, "We are into excellence." That is what we strive for, that's what we want to honor, and that's what we want to reward. The three of you have been selected and have been chosen for excellence in what you do, and we're grateful for that. Everybody that serves on our board, and let's see, Gigi Robinson, I don't know if Gigi is still in here, but I mean, she's been there, she is back there, Beth Welch, you know, she's on our board too, is the incoming president. So with that being said, we're all about supporting you and to support the school system. So with that being said, all of you have been recognized by your peers, by your students, and by your community as being excellent in what you do. So we want to honor you. Mr. Henry is going to walk up and give you a check for $1,000. So that is, in a, congratulations for what you do and for what you've done in the past, what you're doing today, and no doubt what you will be doing in the future. So with that being said, we're proud of you. We are certainly proud of the Teloma school system. Dr. Stevens, we're grateful for what you bring to the table and offer in leadership, and all of those that work with you, and certainly our school board members as well. Kim, for you and your leadership and all of the board members there. We're grateful, we're thankful. Congratulations to you, and we look forward, again, watching and seeing what you will do in the future days to come. Thank you.
All right. It has been delightful to watch the eyes of these three district teacher winners as they were turning around, looking at this incredible acknowledgement. You each deserve it. It has been wonderful to hear about each Teacher of the Year and his and her story. So thank you all so much. Congratulations.
Thank you all so much. Thank you. And although you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, what was it, 94 minutes over-under on the meeting? Also know that we understand if you have other things to do. Thank you so much. Wonderful. And also, I just want to say how much I appreciate the principals and the words that you spoke about your teacher or teachers. You are very connected to them, that is very obvious, and you said wonderful things, wonderful things. Enjoyed it very much. Holland Scholarships, Dr. Stevens?
Yes, this was my second year to participate as a member of the Holland Scholarship Award Committee, and I must say, it is really wonderful to look at those applicants who are new or first-time applicants, and to look at renewal applicants. You get to know about the students, their stories, and it just really makes me especially proud of our students and community. Mr. Jim Henry is here and can speak further to you about what you have in your packet this evening, just as some reminders. Mr. Henry?
Thank you, Dr. Stevens. As you said, the Holland Scholarship, it's an exciting job. It is, some of yours, a lot of work to do with reading all of the applications, but you are amazed, when you read them, of the talent that's coming out of Teloma High School and the circumstances from which some of the children have to come from in order to achieve what they've achieved. And it just, some raises the hair on the back of your neck, some brings tears to your eyes, but it is incredible to go through and see those. The Holland Scholarship was set up by the late John Holland in his will, and he passed away back in the 1970s, and he left $400,000, which, of course, in 1978 was an immense amount of money, for the use of deserving students who would otherwise not be able to afford an education. That's all the guidance we're really given under his will. Since that time it was established, we kept track of, and Sandy has probably the exact amount, but it's well over- Yeah, I knew it was well over a million. We passed a million, I think, last year or the year before, and they still have the $400,000, plus a little extra. The list is in your packets. It's confidential at this time, because they're going to come out at the senior awards night, so we ask you to keep them confidential, but submitting those to the board- So we asked you to keep them confidential, but submitting those to the board on behalf of the Holland Scholarship Committee.
And this year, the committee is awarding $22,550 in scholarship. And I'm excited to be the representative for the Holland Scholarship Award Committee during the awards evening. So I'll be presenting those awards to the students. So it's certainly the administration's recommendation that we accept the 2022 Holland Awards as presented.
Do I have a motion to accept the Holland Awards as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Andy Witt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Teresa Lawson. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
It's all in favor, Chair.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you, Jim. And Jim, thank you so much. We appreciate you so much every year. Are there any individuals to address the board on an agenda item? Seeing there's none, we'll move on to consent agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
So moved, Sid Hill.
Motion by Sid Hill. Is there a second?
Second.
Andy Witt.
Second by Andy Witt. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
It's all in favor, Chair.
Thank you so much. Unfinished business, Buildings and Grounds. Teresa Lawson.
Okay, we had a, as usual, very, very big meeting.
We are busy at work.
Busy, busy. And so we met, the Building and Grounds Committee met on April the 11th, 2022, to discuss the status of the following projects. The committee was updated on a number of potential or upcoming projects for the future. We've started prioritizing and, and we'll, we discussed a lot of those. So bids on the tennis court project have been received and is included as an action item on the April Board Meeting Agenda. John Olive updated the committee on his visit to Columbia Central High School to see their built-in trophy cases. This item will be discussed again at a future meeting. We discussed the train proposal for a new roof at THS. This is included as an action item on the April Board Meeting Agenda. Roof supports have been installed at Bel Air for the summer HVAC project. Train is scheduled to begin the HVAC replacement project as soon as the spring semester ends. Bids were recently accepted to replace the front and side awning at Bel Air. The committee recommended tabling the project until we have a clearer picture of the financial impact of other committed projects. That doesn't mean that it's for, we're going to table it forever, but for just the moment. And then we'll, we'll get, we'll get back to that soon, soon, I hope. The committee discussed replacing the ceiling tile and updating lighting at Bel Air. This is included as an action item on the April Board Meeting Agenda. We discussed the Bel Air roof proposal from Train. This is included as an action item on the April Board Meeting Agenda. Bids were recently accepted for three paving projects throughout the district. These include the parking lot on the north side of the central office, extending asphalt and adding handicap parking at East Middle Soccer and Softball, and reworking the handicap ramp and associated sidewalk at East Lincoln. This is included as an action item on the April Board Meeting Agenda. An addition, also, lastly, an additional strip of concrete is needed behind the softball bleachers to allow ease of access around the bleachers. This will be completed as soon as possible. It did, does anyone, Andy, do you have anything to add?
No, I think that covers it.
Okay. And does anyone else have any, any questions for the committee?
No. Great, great work from the committee.
Okay, thank you.
Lots and lots. Thank you so much. Now we're looking at Bel Air Elementary Projects, Ceiling Tile. Jason Ray.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Replacing the acoustic ceiling tile and the associated grid at Bel Air has been a desire by Building and Grounds Committee for a number of years. The tile and track is deteriorating and in need of attention. Train provided a quote in the amount of $262,008. That includes the removal and disposal of the existing ceiling tile and grid. Installing a new 15th, 16th grid with two-foot by two-foot tile will be installed. This includes project management and site supervision, as well as any painting or patching that would be needed due to any damage that would occur in the removal of the old tile or grid. I'd recommend approving the ceiling tile project as proposed by Train in the amount of $262, excuse me, $262,008. Madam Chair.
Very good. Thank you. Yes, this has been, been a want of ours for a long time. This is pretty exciting, cannot wait to see it done. We're going to hope this goes, moves forward. Do I have a motion to accept Train's proposal to replace the Bel Air ceiling tile and grid at a cost of $262,080?
Chomping at the bit because that was my school when I was having Kleenex. So moved, Sid Hill.
Motion by Sid Hill. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Teresa Lawson. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
It's all in favor.
Very good. Cannot believe what a difference that makes. Bel Air Lighting Upgrades. Mr. Ray.
Thank you. An associated project with the Bel Air ceiling tile replacement would be to complete an upgrade of the interior lighting fixtures. This project has also been a desire of Building and Grounds for a number of years. If you recall, the lighting and ceiling tile were upgraded at East Middle School to new fixtures and bulbs in the past two years, making a tremendous improvement in the aesthetics of that building. Train has provided a quote in the amount of $188,320. This proposal includes the removal and disposal of existing fixtures. New inlay LED fixtures will be installed. Project management and site supervision. In conversation both with Train and internally at TCS, accomplishing this project at the same time as the ceiling tile project is a natural combination due to the ceiling tile and grid needing to be removed to allow more room to work on lighting. Due to needed ductwork replacement for the HVAC project, Train recommends the ceiling tile and lighting project at the same time as the ceiling tile will already be removed for the associated ductwork work. I recommend approving the upgraded interior lighting project as proposed by Train in the amount of $188,320. Madam Chair.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Mr. Ray. Do I have a motion to accept Train's proposal for the replacement of lighting at Bel Air?
So moved, Sid.
Motion by Sid Hill. Is there a second?
Second.
Andy Witt.
Second by Andy Witt. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
It's all in favor.
Excellent. Motion passes. Okay. Bel Air Roof Project. Mr. Ray.
During Train's preliminary audit, they presented to the board at the February study session, they noted that the Bel Air roof would need replacement in the next two to five years. However, the roof was found to have further, have been further deteriorated than originally believed. This was discovered when Train team members were on the roof for the HVAC replacement process. An in-depth roof, roof analysis was performed following this discovery, noting several leaking areas as well as areas needing fascia replacement. Train's recommendation was to replace the entire roof as soon as possible. Doing HVAC and roof at the same time is best practice to avoid multiple times on the roof, which may impact and lead to early deterioration. Train's proposal includes cutting out roof blisters, replacing wet roof insulation, installing crickets to assist in drainage, installing two-ply modified bitumen roof system, installing new 24-gauge drip edges at the gutters, counter flashing, replacing or repairing the damaged fascia, replacing all gutters and downspouts, and provide a 20-year manufacturer's warranty. The net price of this proposal is $1,252,023. We do anticipate using reserve funds for this project. I'd recommend approving the replacement of the roof at Bel Air as proposed by Train in the amount of $1,252,023. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Do I have a motion to accept Train's bid to re-roof Bel Air?
So moved.
Motion by Sid Hill. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Teresa Lawson. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
It's all in favor, Chair.
Excellent. Bel Air, fantastic. Now, Telomah High School Projects. Telomah High School Roof Project. Mr. Ray.
I appreciate you not making me sit down between each of these. Last spring, during Orca Winslow's assessment of the high school, they recommended replacing the entire roof based on current conditions. Additionally, Train's preliminary audit earlier this year noted the THS roof needed replacement as soon as possible. Additionally, we have experienced multiple leaks and issues coming from the roof in several areas of the building. Our maintenance team, as well as a local vendor, has spent multiple days, weeks, and time trying to patch as best they can. While we have tried to make corrections, the challenge continues due to the condition of the roof. Train's proposal is for material and labor, project management, and permitting to include replacing wet roof insulation, installing crickets as needed to assist drainage, installing HD decking, installing two-ply modified bitumen roof per manufacturer requirements. Flashing is needed, installing new wood blocking at the coping caps and on the perimeter, installing new drip edges at gutters, counter flashing, coping cap, cleaning and applying waterproof coating on the EFIS walls, replacing or repairing fascia, replacing all gutter and downspouts, and making structural repairs to the roofing support and to provide a 20-year manufacturer's warranty. The net price of this project is $3,937,071. We are planning to amend our ESER III application to change the use of funds from the THS HVAC as preliminary, as previously applied for, to the THS roof. Once approved, we would use those funds for this project. I'd like to recommend approving the replacement of the roof at THS as proposed by Train in the amount of $3,937,071. Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. Do I have a motion to accept Train's proposal for a new roof at THS utilizing ESER funds?
So moved.
I think that was the word.
I think everyone was excited about the change.
I think that I can see you all making, deciding like, who's going to do this?
Go Sid, keep up, keep up the streak.
Okay, good, okay.
Apparently I'm the money man. So moved.
Motion by Sid Hill. Is there a second?
Second.
Andy Witt.
Second by Andy Witt. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
It's all in favor, Chair.
Yay, excellent. THS Tennis Courts. Mr. Ray.
Thank you. The THS, excuse me, let me try one more time. The tennis courts at the high school have served THS and the Telomah community for many decades. We last resurfaced the tennis courts in late 2015. At that time, the contractor that was resurfacing the court stated that the base needed to be replaced and the surface would not last as long as typical on a court with a solid base. Time has proven this to be an accurate assessment. Additionally, it has been the desire of Building and Grounds to replace the tennis courts due to the water puddling and cracking of the surface. We had invitations to bid and accepted bids earlier in April. We did, we had one bid made by Curl Construction of Wartrace. Included in the plans are a new base under the surface, four courts with a space separating two sets of two courts. This space will include a short fence that would keep tennis balls from crossing into neighboring courts and also include player benches. The project includes new lighting, a new hitting wall and surface underneath the hitting wall, two pickleball courts, and an adjoining location for two nine-square courts. The bid from Curl Construction was in the amount of $960,000. Reserve funds will be utilized for this project. I'd like to recommend approving the tennis court renovation project as proposed by Curl Construction in the amount of $960,000. Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. Do I have a motion to accept the bid from Curl Construction?
So moved.
Motion by Teresa Lawson. Is there a second?
Second.
Andy Witt.
Second by Andy Witt. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
It's all in favor, Chair.
We have been on these tennis courts for how many years now?
I know.
I, I do not play tennis, but I am going to start. Because we have talked about these tennis courts for so many years, I am so excited about this. Excited about all the projects. Thank you so much. Mr. Ray, you don't get to sit down.
I noticed.
2022-23 budget.
Already?
I think we've got district-
A district paving project, sorry. Don't want to skip over that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Both administration and the Building and Grounds Committee have desired to pave the current gravel lot between Central Office and the old Red Cross Building. So the gravel lot on the north side of Central Office, which will provide 25 additional parking spaces. Another area of need is at East Middle. With the recent work to add additional ADA accessibility to both the soccer and softball spectator areas, we'd like to add four designated handicap parking spots near the ticket building entrance. Additionally, we'd recommend paving over in front of the double gate that is currently used for service vehicles. This area is just to the right of the building referenced and is currently gravel. The last of three areas that we're recommending is for work at East Lincoln. The scope of work is to rework the handicap parking ramp and associated sidewalk in the front parking lot. This will meet ADA requirements and allow easier access to the school. We recently accepted bids for these projects and had one response. The combined bid was from Curl Construction and the paving projects totaled $148,354. This project would come from this year's budget. I'd like to ask that you approve these three paving projects as proposed by Curl Construction in the amount of $148,354. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept the bid from Curl Construction?
So moved. Andy Witt.
Bid, uh, bid. Motion by Andy Witt? Is there a second?
Second, Sid.
Second by Sid Hill. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
It's all in favor.
Yay, excellent. Those of us that use the admin building quite a bit that are there, wow, oh wow, that's going to be so nice to have that additional parking there. Really nice. Everywhere it's going to be great, but there is really needed also. Mr. Ray, 2022-23 budget.
Thank you. The debate that I have for you is that the city is preliminarily budgeting a 6% increase in their sales tax revenue for the upcoming year. Please note that that is the increase that we're using to develop our budget and that will be updated if or when new information becomes available from the city. We appreciate them allowing us to share that to you all tonight. We are still waiting on the state's BEP estimate. We have been told that it should be sent later this month and we are anxious to, to see that number. And we are working on several scenarios for next year based on different revenue amounts and we'll adjust those as firmer numbers are known and we'll communicate that with you as time allows. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Ray, for all of that. Excellent. New positions. Dr. Stevens.
Yes, per Board Policy 5.116, when a new position is added, board members must be provided with a job description, the qualifications necessary, and professional responsibilities, essential duties and/or functions of the role. We are requesting a new full-time position and a new part-time position to be added for the upcoming year, which will be a part of next year's general purpose budget. We are bringing these to you this evening because these positions, if approved, will actually begin June 1st ahead of the upcoming budget. In your board packet, you were provided job descriptions for both of these positions. One is a full-time athletic director and the other is a part-time bookkeeping position for athletics. Historically, the athletic director served on a part-time basis and this is a position you all desire to move- you all desired to move to full-time some years ago, somewhere between 2015 and 2017. That was the desire of the board. So we are at that place where we believe it is needed, and a full-time position, particularly with the addition of middle school sports under the umbrella of TMSAA. So it will be a huge responsibility as we enter next year with all of these sports under either TM or TSSAA. Bookkeeping, in terms of athletics, has been handled by the high school bookkeeper and/or middle school bookkeepers for our middle-level sports, and to be honest, at the high school level, this takes a substantial amount of time from a bookkeeper who is responsible to be the school bookkeeper and has significant responsibilities in that role in and of itself. So the athletic bookkeeping duties, we recognize, needs to be pulled from the school bookkeeper to a unique position under athletics. This part-time athletic bookkeeper position will work solely with the athletic director who will serve as the supervisor. Now, there will obviously be collaboration between existing bookkeepers and the new part-time bookkeeper to get this established. These two positions, as noted, will be in the 2022-2023 general purpose budget. The Finance Committee has met and acknowledges that these expenditures will fit into the proposed budget and will fit into the month of June under the current budget where these two positions will begin. I'm seeking your approval of these two new positions so that we can post positions appropriately. If they are going to begin June 1, we need to post the positions, make them publicly known, and then we need to conduct interviews so we can make decisions. We are starting the position June 1. Some of you may wonder, why are you beginning it prior to the budget year? Well, as you know, sports begins in the summer. We have practices and all kinds of things happening year-round. The athletic director position will be a year-round full-time position. Now, with all of that said, I do want you all to know, I have spoken with our current athletic director, John Olive, to offer him the position of full-time AD, should you approve this full-time addition, as he has worked in the role since 2017. If you do approve these two positions this evening, he will then transition into this new full-time year-round role effective June 1. We will then, of course, post his position, which is a teaching position here at the high school. We will post the part-time bookkeeping position tomorrow if you approve these two additional positions. I respectfully request your approval on these two new positions that will be included in the 2022-2023 general purpose budget, so we can post appropriate positions and be ready for the June 1 start dates.
Very good. Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept the new positions of full-time athletic director and part-time athletic bookkeeper as part of the 2022-23 general purpose budget?
So moved.
Motion by Pat Welsh. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sid Hill. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
That's all in favor, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Stevens. Moving on to new business. 2022-23 tuition.
Yes. Board policy, again, it states that students residing outside the boundaries of the school district may attend schools within the school district under several conditions, including paying a tuition fee established annually by the board. Administration recommends continuing the following tuition rates for the 2022-2023 school year. The high school tuition is $900, middle school tuition $600, and elementary tuition is $300. Administration recommends accepting the current tuition rates, which will continue for the 2022-2023 school year as follows: $300 for elementary, $600 for middle, and $900 for high school.
Very good. Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept the tuition rates for the 2022-23 school year?
So moved.
Motion by Teresa Lawson. Is there a second?
Second. Andy Witt.
Good. Second by Andy Witt. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
That's all in favor, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Stevens. Director of Schools Evaluation, that is me. Board Policy 5.803 and Tennessee Code Annotated 49-2-203 require that the board conduct an annual evaluation of the director of schools. Every board member is given the document, and they complete those on their own. Those documents are submitted to our Board Secretary, Sandy Vaughn, who compiles that. And I am very happy to report that Dr. Stevens, this year, received a 4.9 on a scale of 5.0. An exceptional year. None of us are surprised. I want to give just a few things of feedback that come from different board members. No names are used. I'm not giving names when we discuss her review. We actually discussed the review last Thursday. I did let the board know that we had had the discussion. Great job overall. It would be hard to believe you could have started any better. I continue to be pleased with and proud of the professionalism you demonstrate in your work. I am deeply appreciative of your ongoing quest to make each student feel wanted. One of your strengths is with the vision and steps to achieve the vision with a strong plan. Excellent communication skills. You represent TCS to the highest level possible. Involvement in the chamber, Rotary, Coffey County leadership, as well as advocating for the expansion of CTE programming through ongoing meetings with TCAT and AEDC. You have been asked to speak at the upcoming Women Impacting the Community event, and you are serving on a number of committees at the state level. Remember, this is just Dr. Stevens' second year in her role as a superintendent. We have a strategic plan. Board meeting celebrations, as well as social media postings, are wonderful. You lead by example. Decisions are made based on what is best for students. Another incredible year. Thank you, Dr. Stevens, for a great year. We are so proud that you are here with us, and 4.9 on a 5.0 scale is a lot to celebrate.
So for those of you out there who don't realize, this is the only position that the evaluation is conducted in a public forum such as this. So it's always quite a unique position to be in as you sit in this space. I enjoy the conversation with the board chair and really appreciate each of you for your investment in the school system, for your support of me and encouragement of me, your words of wisdom, and your care and compassion. It's a joy for me to work with you. We're just partners in this work, and it's really a privilege. So thank you so much for the incredible feedback. I appreciate it. I take every word to heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And I just want to thank the board for doing such great work on your evaluation document. And moving forward, Dr. Stevens is aware of this, all the board is aware of this, it's just to let it be known, there is a component that was missing because we didn't have a strategic plan. So moving forward, there will be an additional measurable component, and I have Amy Dotson, Sid Hill, and Teresa Lawson are gonna be working on that component. All board members have input, but they're going to be, they're going to get it going, and it will be shared with board members. We will have input. Then I will meet with Dr. Stevens, because by law, she has to agree to the evaluation document, which only makes sense. She needs to know what it's going to be. So, starting next year, there will be an additional component. So, and thank you to those who have, well, I don't know, you were just kind of volunteered to serve, but I know that you all are happy to serve.
Voluntold.
Yes. Voluntold. I like that. Superintendent's report, Dr. Stevens.
Yes. Well, first of all, it was exciting to hear all the projects that Building and Grounds have been talking about and working on for years. This connects to our strategic plan. Facilities is one of our three priorities, so it is exciting to see these things come to life, where we are really making decisions, fiscal decisions, and we are moving projects forward. So I look forward to that component of the evaluation being added, and we can showcase work in all three priorities. It's great to be held both able and accountable. I believe that. So I look forward to that. Of course, it's been exciting this evening. We've celebrated students, we've celebrated teachers, we've celebrated the arts, and there's no surprise, last week, we heard that Telahoma City Schools was named NAMM Foundation Best Communities in Music Education Award winner. This award recognizes teachers, administrators, parents, students, and community leaders who make music a part of well-rounded education. We certainly have an outstanding team of teachers leading talented students, working incredibly hard, and a board who supports this good work of the arts. I'm so thankful that all are being celebrated with this award. A couple of other items to lift up. For many years, the Sportsman and Businessmen's Charitable Organization has donated and supported Telahoma City Schools. This year was no exception. I want to give a huge thank you to this organization for donating $2,000 to help assist TCS students and their families. These funds will be used across the district to purchase clothing, food, graduation gowns, and even help with some transportation costs. We appreciate this support very much. Community partners make all the difference for us, being able to meet the needs, the varied needs of all of our students. So thank you. Now, as an important reminder, as you remember, we had a presentation on enrollment. Kindergarten registration is open, and we're really wanting our future kindergarten students to enroll, 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 so we can get an accurate count, if you will, on projected numbers. This will impact staffing decisions, so let's make sure we register. Pre-K registration is also occurring and takes place at East Lincoln Elementary. Detailed information can be found on our social media sites and, of course, on our website under Parent Information. Go to enrollment. Madam Chair.
Very good. Thank you. I love to hear all the wonderful things that are happening with our students, faculty, and staff within THS, and the best, just keep getting better. In addition, I want to recognize the cast, crew, and directors of the Addams Family.
That was excellent.
You all did a wonderful job. Really, really great. It was so much fun. I want everyone to please enjoy the last few weeks of school. I know it's difficult because it's such a busy, busy time. It is the busiest time, and it's so hard to believe that it is, but it really is. I know the seniors and their parents will want to soak in every second. We are so proud of them and look forward to celebrating them on May 13th. Thank you. City Board Liaison Report, Alder Person Blackwell.
My husband set the fire alarm while cooking.
Oh, goodness.
It's the third time it's happened this year during meetings.
I'm glad you didn't say that on television.
So, okay. I want to give you guys a few updates that we have, and that is that there is, on Monday night, this coming Monday, there'll be a public hearing at the city board meeting for the ARPA funding and how that will be used. It's been put in the newspaper, as well as in other places, what the proposals are as of now, but we're inviting everybody to come to actually give their feedback on it. Tonight, there's a CDBG grant meeting, right now, at DW Wilson to talk about funding for expansion of daycare options here in the community. I wanted to give you the heads of the downtown signal replacement is delayed as of now. They're having issues getting stuff, like everybody, I think, is at this point, supply train issues. East Grundy Street sidewalks are moving forward. Those are being worked on, which is really exciting. And the final thing I wanted to give you guys, the update, is the 2040 draft plan is on our website. We would love for you all to go on there and give us your feedback on it, because it's so important for us to get a really good idea of what that strategic plan will look like for us. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions for? Thank you so much.
Thanks, y'all.
Good luck with that dinner. You might need to stop somewhere on your way home. Personnel Report, Dr. Stevens.
Yes, you have, in an attachment, the personnel changes for the month of April presented to you.
Thank you so much. Monthly Financial Report, Mr. Ray.
Thank you. You have in your packet the financial report for the fiscal year ending March 31st. Revenue's in a good position at this point in the fiscal year, and expenditures are tracking well at this point as well. We do have a number of projects that should wrap up prior to the end of the year, and obviously we'll hit the expenditure budget before June 30th. Open any questions you may have on the report.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Ray? Thank you so much. Is there anything else to come before the board? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Sid.
Motion by Sid Hill. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Teresa Lawson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
That is last day.
Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.